Welcome to the Common Council of Richmond, Indiana for May the 5th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Remain standing for a prayer.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dear gracious and heavenly Father, thank you for the opportunity to gather in service of our community, grant us the wisdom to make just decisions, the courage to do what is right, and the compassion for those we serve. Bless our city, bless our leaders, and bless our people. Amen.
Amen, ma'am. Thank you very much. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Doug Goss, Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhardt.
Here.
Jerry Purcell.
Here.
Eight are present.
Thank you. Mr. Goss has an excused absence as he called me earlier. Approval of the minutes is held on April the 21st, 2025. Do we have any corrections or additions?
Mr. President.
Mr. Purcell.
If there's no edits or amendments, I move that we approve it as presented.
Second.
Have a motion second to approve the minutes as presented. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Presentations, petitions, memorials. Do we have any tonight?
We have a resolution.
There are none. We have the resolution number four.
Resolution number four, 2025, a resolution of Richmond Common Council extending recognition and support of endorsement of abilities Richmond.
Do we have any comments from any of the council members at this time?
I shared this with the ability staff last Thursday, I want to say. Got a call Friday with their confirmation that they found it very satisfactory.
Good to hear.
Great.
Any additional comments? What is council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I move to approve resolution number four, 2025.
Second.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for approval of resolution number four, 2025. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Council members, sitting to my left is our honorary mayor for a day, Tatum Rivera from Hibbard. She's the winner of the Chamber Commerce 2025 National Civics Beat for Richmond-Wayne County two weeks ago. And as that, she and the second and third place winners will go on to the Indiana State Competition. And you may recall, last year, the first where we did this, the winner of the Indiana competition made it all the way to Washington DC. So we're really hopeful. She had a really great essay, but I'll let you let her tell her more about herself, or answer your questions you may have for her, because she's a mayor.
Well, besides going to Hibbard, I do athletics outside of school with amigos tennis, which kind of helped my decision in what I wanted to do with my essay, which was the immigration and birthright laws. And that's really what my essay was about.
Very nice.
Any questions from council for the mayor?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Tatum, congratulations.
Thank you.
If you were mayor for the day, what would be the first thing you would do after you had your coffee and?
She does drink coffee.
Got to start early. I'd probably visit the schools. That's one of the main things that I want to be involved in, is the schools definitely more.
Very good.
Have you handled any of the IRA phone calls yet?
No.
Well, then, you need to be baptized with that.
Come back another day.
Oh, gosh.
Mr. Wright, would you have any comments?
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
By any chance, do you have your essay?
Not on me now.
Okay.
I'm sure we can get you a copy.
Please do. I'd like to see. I'd like to read it.
Yeah, of course.
Because I work in the schools as well. So, yeah, I'd like to read that.
That's awesome. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I do have one question for while we're on camera. What's been your favorite part of the day so far?
I mean, in general, just getting the inside scoop of what it is like to be in the mayor's office is really just an honor in itself. But I'd definitely say the luncheon because I definitely got to see a lot more people that I didn't know were involved.
Very good.
Nice.
That was a nice one.
Okay. A couple more notes. Item of note, WCTV, the future of WCTV, the city. I convened a meeting today between the county, IU East, and WCTV Board to discuss its future. And all I can say right now is more to come. For the rest of this month, we're covered, and we'll figure out next month going forward. So, once we have some kind of report to give you all, be sure to share that with you. And also, department heads are continuing to impart their 2026 budget plans ahead of the summer meetings, where they start meeting with the administration and others, and the Finance Committee. And then reminder, the committee, the whole is August 25th through the 27th. Most likely, there'll just be two nights, 25th and 26th, as usual.
Any questions from council?
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
I would like to say that the first meeting of April, I asked for unfunded liabilities list, and the mayor did supply that tonight, and I want to thank him for that.
You're welcome.
Any additional questions? Comments? Report from the Board of Works is in your packet for the minutes of April the 10th and April the 17th. Are there any questions regarding those meetings? Any reports from department heads, standing committees at this time? Disculpable business? Ordinance on first reading.
Am I going to make a motion to?
Mr. President, I would like to move to suspend the rules and read ordinance 28, 2025 by title only.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and read ordinance number 28, 2025 by title only. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Ordinance number 28, 2025, an appropriation ordinance amending the 2025 budget.
Questions of the clerk at this time from council? Report from the Finance Committee. Would you like to have this referred, or have you looked at it?
We did not look at this, no.
So we'll refer it to the Finance Committee. Will that still meet your requirement?
If the price doesn't go up, we'll try.
Okay. Ordinance on second reading. We have none. Is there any unfinished business to come before the council at this time?
Move for adjournment.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to move for adjournment. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Stand adjourned. Thank you.
I couldn't say adjourn.
You keep my record. Eight minutes. Yeah.
What is it?
What is it?
Good evening and welcome to the Richmond Power and Light Meeting for Monday, May the 5th. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Doug Goss, Lucinda Wright.
Present.
Bill Engel.
Here.
Larry Parker.
Here.
Ann Taylor.
Here.
Gary Turner.
Here.
Jane Bumbalo.
Here.
Justin Burkhart. Jerry Purcell.
Here.
Are present.
Thank you. Did good. By now you have received the minutes from our meeting from April the 7th, our Richmond Power and Light Meeting from April the 7th. What is council's pleasure?
Motion to approve as presented if there's no additions or corrections.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes from our meeting on April the 7th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bills to be approved.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Finance Committee has reviewed the bills and moves for approval of $7,276,564.87.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the bills to be paid in the amount of $7,276,564.87. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any unfinished business at this time? Report from the General Manager.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a few items for action this evening. The first of which is requesting permission to award the bid for a new compact pickup truck for the Engineering Department as previously approved in the budget. We will be trading this little 2013 Ford Transit Cargo Van. We did have two bids last month that we opened. Both were for Wetzel Ford. One was for a 2024 model that they do have on the lot. It's a leftover from last year. And we also, they also bid a 2025 model that they would have to order. After the trade, the 2024 model would be $35,733. So that is what we are requesting approval to move forward with this evening.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
I'd like to make a motion to award the bid for one new 2024 compact pickup truck for the Engineering Department in an amount of $35,733.
Second.
Mr. Parker, 2025?
They bid a 2024 that they have. It's a leftover or 2025. The 2024 is about $1,000 cheaper.
Okay. All right, we have a motion and a second to award the bid for a 2024 compact crew cab pickup for the Engineering Department. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. The second action item this evening is to award the bid for a new 2025 or newer 55-foot bucket truck for the Line Department as previously approved in the budget. The trade will be a 2015 Freightliner bucket truck with 50,000 miles and over 10,000 engine hours. We did have two bids that we opened last month. One was from Altech. After trade, the bid would be $305,677. The other bid was from Terex. They did not offer to buy our other truck, so that their total bid price was $359,628. As a result, we would like to request or get permission this evening to move forward with the Altech bid in the amount of $305,677 after trade.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Purcell.
I make a motion to award the bid for $305,677 to Altech.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to award the bid for the 2025 55-foot Class VII bucket truck.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Before we move on, it says 76 weeks to get the?
And actually, that's better than what we have been experiencing.
Okay. We can make it that long?
Yeah, we've, because of the lead times, we have started planning like a year in advance, knowing that it's taking a little bit longer. This is back in line with pre-COVID orders, which would be 18 to 24 months. Things, they're directly thereafter COVID were spreading out to three years or longer to get trucks, so.
Okay, great.
Getting back to normal.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Engel. Any other discussion? We have a motion and we have a second to award the bid to, for the 2025 55-foot Class VII bucket truck. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Last month, we requested permission to go out to bid for a new 2025 Class III 3500 extended cab truck with a utility body to be used by the Line Department. The trade would be a 2012 model with approximately 120,000 miles. So we did go out to bid on that. And we do have the proof of publication here. So first, we'd request your acceptance of the proof of publication.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
Move to accept proof of publication and place on file.
Second.
Any other discussion on that? We have a motion and a second to approve the proof of publication on file. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. We do have two bids to open this evening. First one is from Wetzel Ford. The amount, price $76,992. They're offering 7,500 in trade. This would be a total of $69,492. And they highlighted that this includes four sets of keys. They know us because we always request extra sets of keys, and they underlined this was not requested, though. So they were thinking.
Very good.
So that's nice when your local bidders know you. All right. Next one.
It's a little needy.
It's from Sam Roberts. That's what it says on the, Sam Roberts, Bloomington Ford. Price $70,989.25. $8,500 for the trade for a total price of $62,489.25.
That's interesting.
Says last order date is the 9th.
69.
Must be ordered ahead of that time, which we will not be able to do most likely. So, okay. That, we would request permission to take this under advisement.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we refer those bids to the General Manager for examination, tabulation, and recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to refer this to the General Manager for tabulation, evaluation, and recommendation. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. And tonight, for your information, have a few things to go over. First of which, we do have the green rate on the website now. It's under the Safety and Education section. There's a link there. And the application and information about the Green Power Program is available online. So you can do everything online. We have started sending this information out, especially to the EDC, as they've been anxiously awaiting for this to go live. So I just wanted to announce tonight that it is ready, ready to go. Speaking of rates and programs, we have been working diligently on the cost of service study, the rate study for 2025. Don't have anything to report because we are simply uploading data to the consultants right now. But there are a couple of programs that we need to include into the study, and I thought this would be a good time to talk about those, so we're not doing all of this all at once in a few months. The first of which is the EMPA large user rate. So some history on that is the EMPA board approved a resolution in 2021 that provided a mechanism to serve very large users at market-based rates for loads of 100 megawatts or more. So during this timeline, this is when there was a lot of demand for power in communities for Bitcoin mining operations. In 2022, and then again in 2024, the EMPA board amended that resolution and lowered that threshold to 40 megawatts. So to put that in perspective, the entire city, an average daily load for us is about 120 megawatts. So one customer of 40 megawatts would be equal to one-third of our city's daily demand. So that's a pretty big customer. Now, who would be requesting this type of power? And I'm sure we've all heard that AI data centers are being built everywhere, or they're trying to find locations for those, and they are huge, huge power users. So that's one of the industries that are driving this. But if you talk to the EDC, I think Valerie will tell you, we get a lot of requests for information for, from companies wanting 10, 20, 30 megawatts. So it's really interesting how things are shifting, that these companies are needing so much power. So why would we need this rate? Well, first, if we attracted a customer that is 40 megawatts or larger, we would need to adopt this large power rate. The EMPA has asked all the member communities to do this. So why is this important? So these large customers are challenging because of, number one, the uncertain term of the customer. And if they were on our system through our regular rate structure, if they had any changes, it would affect our base rates. So as a result, that's why I mentioned earlier, these would be served at a market rate. We'll talk a little bit more about that. So in the EMPA resolution that's in their rates, the customer would be served at market rate. The customer would be required to pay for any upgrades to the system to serve their load, which is no different than what we do now. We do have customer charges when it comes to certain upgrades, depending on the return on investment. The customer may be billed more frequently than just monthly. So tonight, for example, when you approved our claims, the majority of that $7 million that you approved tonight was the power bill from EMPA, which fluctuates anywhere from $5 to $7 million. So if you were to take a third of that, imagine one customer having a bill of $2 million, for example. We would not want them to default bill if they fell on hard times. So EMPA is recommending that they pay more frequently than monthly, so even weekly, as an example. Other terms and conditions, that this would be a contract between EMPA, RP&amp;L, and the customer. They would be required to enter an SGO agreement or letter of credit to pay for the charges to upgrade the system. And they may be required to also provide a guarantee if EMPA has to enter into new contracts to secure this additional power. So the reason we keep talking, I mentioned market rate power, is because EMPA contracts for very long terms for power, and that's what keeps our rates lower. So when they enter into a contract, it's 10, 20, or even 30 years. And so if you have a single customer that is this large or larger, you don't want to enter into an extremely long-term contract because you don't know the viability if they're going to be there five years, 10 years, 15 years. And then there would be probably be clawbacks that, you know, EMPA would still have to pay for some of that power, even if it's not used, which would then be passed along to all the member utilities. So if we needed to pass this sooner, if we landed a very large project in our community, this would be treated just like the green power rate that we adopted earlier this year. We would have a resolution from the Board of Directors recommending to the City Council to adopt this rate. Otherwise, our plan is just to include this as part of the cost of service study, so that it's a comprehensive package later this year when we're putting everything together. Before I move to the next topic, I'd entertain any questions that you might have. If not, we'll go a different direction. We would like to talk about prepay. So this is something a lot of utilities are doing. We considered this during our last rate study. We were still members of the IURC at that time, and our attorney told us, no one in Indiana has done this yet. You don't want to be the first one. So we took her advice and we did not pursue it. Since then, Duke, AEP, a lot of the larger utilities have adopted a prepay program. So what is a prepay program? It's just like a prepaid cell phone plan, except you're buying your power in advance. When you get close to running out of that prepaid power, you would get a notification on your smartphone or an email via the Smart Hub app. And when you need to make more payments, you can make those payments in person, on the website, or through your Smart Hub app. So what we are considering for our prepaid program is that this would be for residential customers only. There would not be any additional charges for using this program. The customer would need an AMI meter, which if they don't have one, of course, we would get that installed for them. And this could possibly negate the need for a deposit if you use this program. Customers with a certain level of bad debt could have a portion of each payment going towards paying off that bad debt. The idea we have is 25% of each payment would go towards paying off their bad debt. And a minimum of a $50 initial payment when you set up your P-pay, prepay program, and then after that, it would just need to be a minimum of $25 thereafter. We would ask the customer to stay on this program for 12 months. This is our standard request for anyone that is able to change rates. But we still have a lot of details in the work. We're studying some of the other utilities that are doing this, but I just wanted to, this evening, kind of introduce another one of the ideas we're thinking about as we work on the rates this year and the new tariff. And I would entertain any, oh, and I think I have another slide on this. How can we do this? Well, because we do now have the Smart Hub mobile app and AMI meters, they work hand in hand. Because right now, if you have an AMI meter, you can get on your app, like I've talked about before, and you can see your power consumption in 30-minute increments, get messages if you log in or sign up for those. So the technology is there. We're able to do this, but we just need to formalize the program and adopt that. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Parker.
On the deposit, I think that we should keep the deposit in place. Because that's one way that we are assured of getting something if they don't pay their bill.
Right.
And the people that will go on this are, I guess, twofold. Those people who really like tech, and those people who have a hard time paying their bill.
Right.
So I would, I would suggest we keep the deposit.
Well, I guess the thought is, you're paying in advance with the P-pay, prepay program. So that's why we thought about that vision. So something we can look into still.
Okay.
Happy to do it.
With Larry, though, you hold the deposit, and they make a prepay in addition to the deposit the day they get the electricity turned on.
Our deposits are returned one year afterwards.
Right.
With interest.
Upon request.
Yes, we make those payments. All right. Any further questions on the prepay program? If there are none, just to wrap up this evening, what else is happening? There are plenty of things going on. A few of these things I put in the monthly update, but it's that time of year where we start working on our annual insurance renewals, working with the auditors to wrap up the audit. The I-70 widening, road widening project does affect us. We have lines that go over I-70 at Union Pike, so we've been working diligently on a few things there. Actually, AJ's helped us out with some easement issues and things like that, but that is all moving forward. The crews are working on providing power to the asphalt plant on Industries Road that will be serving the I-70 project. They're changing out a 69 KV breaker at Williamsburg Sub currently. Street lights, I got exclamation points behind that because we are trying to get streetlights caught up. Now that we're coming out of the winter season, there are some things that's just very difficult to do when the ground is frozen, especially fixing underground feet. So we know we have several out there, and we're trying to try our best to get those wrapped up. Pole changeouts, this is ongoing. Every 10 years, we do a pole study on the structural stability of our poles, and then we spend the next 10 years changing out those that need to be changed. So we're still working on that. The next pole study will occur in 2027. And we have a lot of customer-related projects that we're helping out with, still working out in the Midwest Industrial Park, and much, much more. So everyone's staying busy this spring. Entertain any other questions that you might have.
What questions do we have for Tony? Mr. Purcell.
I think this question's probably more for Mr. Sickman. At the last conference, I found that we can annex the solar parks into the city. And would that be something we would discuss here or at council if we wanted to set up a committee and look at that and consider it?
I think that topic is probably appropriate for both of those bodies, but the actual process to effectuate that would be through Richmond Common Council.
Okay. Thank you.
What other questions for Mr. Foster? Hearing none, do we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make a motion to adjourn, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're adjourned.
You going to?
Mr. AJ.
Yeah. New Orleans. You want? Grow ears.
This is long.
Well, okay.